To call the today's Board of Trustees meeting to order that the record reflect. It is Thursday, February twen- feb- February eighth, twenty twenty four, and the time is ten oh five A M. Uh Board Secretary, would you please call the role?
Trustee Ahuna.
Yo.
Trustee Akaka.
Yo.
Trustee Akina.
Aloha Kakao.
Trustee Alapa.
I present.
Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask.
Present.
Chair Hululunzi.
Here.
You have eight trustees present, you have.
Thank you. Aloha Kakao, welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting. This meeting can be viewed and observed via live stream on OHA's website at W W W dot OHA dot org slash livestream. Before we begin, I would like to note that item, items three A and three B was received under the seventy-two hour deadline. Joining us today, we have our C E O Kapoana Stacy Ferrera. I would like to ask Stacy to introduce any administrative staff joining us today.
Mahalo, aloha Kakahiaka Chair, Vice Chair, Trustees. Joining us today is C E O Casey Brown, Interim General Counsel Everett Ota, CFO Ramona Hink, Interim Senior Legal Counsel Nichi Ozawa. We also have uh Compliance Enforcement Manager Kai Markel, Kamakana Ferrara Lead Compliance Specialist. And we also have our I T Systems Engineer and Administrator Arlene Agnaldo, and I T Systems Engineer and Administrator Dan Santos. Um also joining us is Director of Advocacy Kyopu Relats. Mahalo.
Thank you. First on our agenda is approval of minutes. Lehuwa, do we have anyone to speak on this item?
No one is signed up to speak on this item.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes that's outlined, which is the site visit lot E uh at Hakone, site visit lot L, site visit lot K, and site visit lot A at Hakone. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka. Trustee Akaka, thank you. Trustee Akina. Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Chair Hululunzi.
Hi.
You have eight yes votes.
Our next item on the agenda is three A, Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment. Lehuwa, is anyone signed up to speak on any of the items under three A?
No, there is no one signed up.
Trustee Akaka.
Your Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment, having met on February seventh, twenty twenty four, and after full and thorough discussion, recommends approval of the following motions to the Board of Trustees. Motion one, to approve administration's recommendations on new bills, item four, as listed on Matrix two, twenty twenty four, or state legislature bill positions related to measures naming OHA February seventh, twenty twenty four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina. Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Chair Hululunzi.
Hi.
You have eight yes votes.
Trustee Akaka.
Motion two, move to approve administration's recommendations on new bills, items two through one forty, excluding items ninety-four, ninety-five, one forty-two, and two oh three, as listed on Matrix three, twenty twenty four, OHA State Legislature Positions Related to Measures Affecting Native Hawaiians, February seventh, twenty twenty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Trask.
Aye.
And Chair Hululunzi.
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Trustee Akaka.
Motion three, move to approve items ninety-four, S B two four seven four and ninety-five, H B seventeen sixty-eight, as listed on Matrix three, twenty twenty four, OHA State Legislature Positions Related to Measures Affecting Native Hawaiians, February seventh, twenty twenty four.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Chair Hululunzi.
Hi.
You have eight yes votes.
Thank you. Trustee Akaka.
Motion four, move to approve the changes to items one four two, H B seventeen ninety-four and two oh three, H B two five four zero, from comment to support on Matrix three, twenty twenty four, OHA State Legislature Positions Related to Measures Affecting Hawaiians, February seventh, twenty twenty four.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Trustee Akina.
Thank you very much. Well, aloha to all my colleagues this morning. I think there was a little bit of confusion, and I really want to thank the administration for clarifying that yesterday when we discussed this. We need to be clear that we're talking about a bill that would add two years of requirements to all students in the D O E, including our native Hawaiians, and require them to pass it in order to graduate. And I'm glad that we were able to clarify that it's two years of full requirement. Uh nobody needs to be embarrassed about misreading that. I misread it the first time myself because it was referred to as uh two-hour credits, and that sounds very small. But we've checked with the D O E requirements, and this bill actually is talking about requiring two years of full study and passing that course just to graduate. Now, that raises some concerns. The first concern was raised by our Board Chair, Trustee Hululunzi, and I agree with her completely. This could place a burden on a lot of kids who find it hard to do academic work. And I would add to that, that we have the lowest graduation rate amongst native Hawaiians of of any ethnic group in the D O E. And so we don't want to add that burden. But it also would affect students who want to get into top colleges. We have one of the lowest acceptance rates. And to get into top colleges to pursue fields that we desperately need native Hawaiians in, medicine, law, and so forth, students have to fill their spare time or whatever time they have earning credits in a great many areas, and this would affect them. So here's what I'd like to suggest, and I asked my colleagues if you'd be open to this. I think we made a very good decision at the original B A E meeting, and that was to s- to send to the legislature comments. And comments is a very good way for OHA to be able to do a couple of things. First, our comments will be able to tell the legislature, we absolutely support the learning of Olelo Hawa'i amongst all students, especially native Hawaiians. And we absolutely support that every school should be able to make available the teaching of Olelo Hawa'i. That's OHA's position. That's important, we have to say that loud and clear, and we can do so in our comments. But we will also be able to say, let's do it in a way that doesn't put a huge burden on our kids. Let's do it in such a way that doesn't harm those who have struggles graduating. We we mustn't do that at all. So comments would be very, very good. And that's why today, when this bill is voted on, we have to understand what we're voting on. The option would be to change away from comments and support the bill in its current form, which would be harmful, or keep the decision that the majority of this board made, which is to send well-written comments. So if you want that position, to send good comments, vote a'ole. You're not voting a'ole on Hawaiian language. What you're voting a'ole on is changing away from our comments position. So because I support sending comments that show that we we stand for Hawaiian language, but we don't want to harm our students, when we vote, I'm going to vote a'ole, and that's what a'ole means. Thank you.
Trustee Ahuna.
Um thank you Chair, um being a Kanaka is is not and never will be a burden. And uh also, what's good for Hawaiians is good for all. Thank you.
Anything else? Trustee Trask. Trustee Trask.
Start. You know, colleagues and Chair, we're here to move the business of the office. We took a clear vote on this yesterday, we have a complete debate. And I am not for what Trustee Akina is saying. He doesn't want the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to come out and support this measure for language, is what he's saying. You know, I'd like to not repeat the hour and a half discussion from yesterday and call for a vote because we have very strong support for Hawaiian language on this board. And it's the wrong message to send. You wanted to make some changes in the legislature, you could have gone down there, Akina, but you didn't. And what you're trying to do here, as far as I'm concerned, is squawk about another Hawaiian cultural facet that we are the only state agency to support so that we would come out so that we aren't supporting it. Tried to get us to kill yesterday, we didn't go for it. Today, he wants us to appear confused that we just want to comment, no trustees, let's send a clear message, we're gonna support Hawaiian language.
Thank you, Trustee. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Ahuna. Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
A'ole.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Chair Hululunzi.
Hi.
You have seven yes, one a'ole.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is items three B, Hui Malama o Kaneo luma. Rupert Rowe, Presentation on the Concerns Regarding the Kauai Planning Commission's Approval of Kauanoe o Koloa's Master Drainage Plan and OHA Advocacy. Lehuwa, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have three speakers. The first speaker is Elizabeth Okinaka. Elizabeth, can you unmute yourself?
Aloha. Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um aloha. Yes, I would just um like to testify in support of Uncle Rupert's presentation. I was there personally at that uh December Planning Commission meeting, and um this drainage report that, I wouldn't even call it a drainage report, it was more of an incomplete study. And um the conditions of this requirement, they they have to study the effects specifically stated on this hail, and that was never done. Uh if you go back and you watch the the meeting that happened just recently in December, uh the engineer for Isaki's on December twelfth openly stated, he looked at the master plan for the hail, but they never in-depthly studied how how this um all of these, these developments, effectively all of this runoff would affect the hail. Um so I'm just here today supporting Uncle Rupert, mahalo.
Thank you, thank you Elizabeth. Christine Chow. Calling on Kiara Rodriguez. You can start, Kiara.
Um oh no, sorry, uh Kiara, um can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um aloha no, Kiara Lorenzo Rodriguez, for the record, I just want to stand here in solidarity with um the Koloa Aho'ua and ensure that it is being protected. Um we all know the effects that developments had had on that evi kupuna and to put more um runoff onto evi kupuna. I I cannot stand for, I hope OHA will ensure the protection of our cultural resources, not only our evi, but especially our Kai. Mahalo, Pihah.
Mahalo. I'd like to call um Kai Markel to the table, and while he's coming up, um Trustee Ahuna.
Chair, um if if we could um actually have Uncle Rupert prior to Kai to state the issue, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Mahalo.
Trustee Ahuna.
Okay, uh thank you Chair, Board, and uh Executive Staff. Um first of all, I'm very honored to have uh the Po'oh of Kaneo luma here today, Rupert Rowe. Um Kaneo luma is located on the south side of of Kauai Island, and um it's a Hawaii, ancient Hawaiian village that it's, I mean, it's, you can see it, it's not like a secret or anything like that. In fact, it's evenly, it's it's even federally recognized. Um the reason why I want to bring this up before I uh call Rupert up is um a lot of us think that Kauai has never been conquered. So one of the things that um Kaneo luma did is they placed a rock from Kaneo luma onto the hail that Pu'ukala. Oh. And stuff like that has never been done, especially in today. So you know, the the federal government got involved, and they 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 actually said it was okay. And that's, that's why I'm saying that this this hail is also federally recognized. This is not just like some, some like uh open land, open space land, it's actually a hail that you can actually see it. And I know a lot of you have visited this area. In recent, um it, in early December, in fact, December fifth and six, I I believe, is when they had this um planning com- uh committee hearing. Um they needed a drainage, uh a drainage permit. And what they did is they used the the hail as the drainage basin. So um today, Uncle Rupert is here to to talk about um maybe getting some support, you know, with with uh moving forward on making sure that um our colony don't desecrate our 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 sacred lands. So uh I'd like to call up Rupert Rowe, the Po'oh of Kaneo luma.
That's a important thing between uh Kaneo luma and Pu'ukala. Because for those of you don't know where Pu'ukala is, it's on the island of Hawaii in the Kauai High Area.
And you kind of just bring rocks over there or anything like that.
Yeah.
So um so the feds, you know, the information came down and they accepted it. So I'm very proud to present today Rupert Rowe.
I feel like you guys sitting in this chair. Well, anyway, getting to what Trustee Ahuna said, Kaneo luma played a great role in unifying all our islands culturally. We started off at this hail back in nineteen ninety-seven. Nobody knew what was going on because it was hidden. There was no access to the hail because it was surrounded by cactus. So we started, and as we progressed along the way, we cleaned it up from the hurricane that in ninety-two, Iniki, had all the things in there. All the bones from the graveyard was in a parking lot, we put them all back. But it was a journey that I told the people that was there. To do such a job, you must be porno. You must ask Akua to open the door for our, to our past so that we can have a future. And by having a future, this hail provided a lot of people there. I have a a talking chief, his name is Ke'ani Smith. He's um a language doctor. I have Kaina Makua, who is working with Jason Mamoi, being Kamehameha. I have Peleki Flores, he's amazing that is doing alakuku fish pond and the one in Kaneo'i. So at the beginning, I sent them all the way to get certified and recognized. Trustee Robert Lindsey and Trustee um Donald Cataluna was in the back of this whole thing, and many other trustees that are not here today. So as we set everything up, there was something that came about. We intervened in the the drainage back then because there was no drainage plan, and if you know Kauai, there's no river on the south side. So everything would flow into the hail. So the Land Use Commission denied the landowner a zoning change unless they could come up with a drainage plan. But they never did come up with a drainage plan, but a backdoor plan. So when you ask them for the drainage plan, there is no legal document that is written. They don't recognize the hail. So in my PowerPoint that I presented to you folks, if you folks will put it up, and uh I can explain much easier. Oh, okay. Well, before I get up there, I have nine um airplanes that, I mean, companies that fly into Hawaii, each one wrote about Kaneo luma. So we're in Air China, we're in Hawaiian Airlines, New Zealand Airlines, everything. Alaska Air and all, I did um couple pages for them. And they understand what was happening. Air China watched us clean the hail, and they made it a point to fly back and interview us. I give all my strength to those that surround me because without them, I would not be the voice for them. So by going to Pu'ukala, I sat next to um Sam Kai on my right, and on the left was Kelmoko Kapu. My speech was based upon our identity because the people is lepo. We don't really know who we are as a people. And the struggles that we face when we go forward is a very hard problem. Because the public don't recognize us because we're intermarriage. And they think of us as a third-class citizen in our homeland. So this hail made everybody come together as one. Kauai went there to unify all of us because we knew there is a big battle that lies ahead. So when we took the Puhaku and placed it in the hail, the National Parks Director took it out and put it in our office. The National Parks in Washington, D C told them to put it back and don't get involved in the Kanakama'olli's religious rights. So the federal government recognized us. The state government in the Land Use Commission brought their staff to Kauai. Tree AGs and all the commissioners to Kani Oluuma. And they were impressed of what was there. Kani Oluuma is the only intact native village in the whole state of Hawaii. I give my honor to Henry Kekahuna because he foresees the future. And by foreseeing the future, this kapuna laid it out for us to protect our past. So that's how I got involved in Kani Oluuma. By having this great person really open the door for the future so that we would be in there with our heart and souls. So I touched a lot of people along the way. Everybody is involved with us. I'm kind of nervous right now. I'm trying to put my thoughts into. Yeah. And I had fourteen universities come to Kani Oluuma. I had Stanford, Princeton, Chicago Laola. And they would bring their students there. I had the dean and the chancellors from these schools come. And they all wanted to know the history of our islands and our people. And I had a great time explaining it to them. I touched all the charter schools throughout Hawaii. All the high school that teaches Hawaiian to the students, they came to see me at Kani Oluuma. We're very exposed out there in the real world. But I usually let the people around me take the credit, which they deserve it. I'm just an instrument to make the thing go forward. So as a kapuna right now, I'm gonna be eighty-three years old. My time on this Aina is limited. So I look at this as a very important thing that I brought it up to my trustee. And I insisted that he take a greater look and get in the back of what we are fighting for on Kauai. So the drainage plan, the county does not have a drainage plan for their own self. So the state told me to take this problem in front of Kauai Council, which I did, but they dragged that out. And by doing so, that's why we have a problem there. A very, very big problem. The problem is that they don't recognize us. The county believes they control the He'ao. They decide what they're going to do, not what the people decide. So we got into this big hassle right there. So when the mayor changed hand from Kavaleo to Kawakami. Kawakami said to us, that's not his project, so he would not support it. So that's why the He'ao, from what my presentation, will expose all of this. And I think I can explain it much better. If you guys want to get the PowerPoint up, then I, okay. This girl wrote a story about us in the Hawaii Tourist Magazine. Her name was Chrissy, I think was her first name. But I have a lot of people that write about us. The New York Times wrote an article about us. The San Francisco Gates Newspaper wrote an article. Now they're on an investigation. And seeing how the county got away with what they got away with. But on a culture site, what the county did is use a text map key. By using a text map key, it did not identify the He'ao. It identified the parcel. And we watched this whole thing and then I was very disturbed because we're playing Konani. And the move was in their hands, so now the move is in my hand. So when I, I know Ku is rising. So as on Kanaka, the time has come to get down. And let's do what we need to do. That's why I'm here in front of all of you. Okay?
Just say next slide, if you want the next one. Just say out loud, next slide.
Oh, next prayer, next picture. How's that? Okay. Fully intact. Henry Kekahuna, many of you may not know him. But he's a man that had only one leg. And he did sixty-nine He'aos throughout Hawaii. So I went to the big island to learn about Henry Kekahuna and the measurements that he did. And Billy Fields was doing the project in Ke'au, putting up the Luakini He'ao, a walked He'ao, and understood everything about Henry Kekahuna. Next. This He'ao, nobody paid attention. But it is such an important He'ao. The picture that shows the head next. Brief history of the He'ao. So when we got involved with this He'ao, everybody wanted to know, so we did ask our kapunas from that area. My granddad and many of the old kapunas from there knew how important this was. For the rest of Hawaii, may never have known how important it was. Next. That's the important man right there, Henry Kekahuna. Very important. If you read about him, he foresees the future. And he understood the problems that our people would go through. And by doing so, I really said to myself, thank you for opening the door for Kauai. Kapuna Kekahuna. I honor him. Next. In nineteen ninety-seven, we cleaned this whole thing in here, took out all the hurricane debris. We found a cave in here with evis inside. We buried the cave. Nobody knows where the caves are. They who lie in peace will lie in peace forever in this He'ao. Next. This is the stewardship agreement that we had with the county. On the right side is Monakia Tras, or mayor, and my partner Billy Kauai Holauli from Ni'au, the family. Next. This is when we went to Pu'okalau. That's the Puhaku that we took. It was the summer solstice Puhaku. There was at an idol site, and that's what we placed. This is Keahani Smith, Peleki Ke'aka, and Kani Tarealdi, and my crew in a back there. This is when we were doing our presentation. The Akka. The rainbow came down from above. And it was a beautiful thing. Nobody ever seen something like that happen. So it was the source of the power from Kauai being at Pu'okalau, which the Kahuna from Kauai gave it to Kamehameha from the south side where we are. Okay, next. This is Kani Oluuma in two thousand twelve. The top of that is the shape of a man's body. Inside there, there's a triangle. And on the top, you can look, the Hawaiians never made no water from the east going there. It came from the west. So that's why I say the drainage cannot be used this site as a catchment, detention basin. There's a difference between a catchment and a detention. A detention is holding the water there. A catchment, when it rains, it will overflow and then it will go down. These are things that we planted. I planted four hundred and seventy-five native trees in there. I planted core trees from the mountain and the raw line. Every tree that went in there is native to this area. Next. Hold on, should I go back? That's Bill Ilah on the top. That's Randy Whitman. He's my historian. And then my partner, and then Bill Ilah's wife. Next. This Pu'el, the day we built the wall around the He'ao, the Pu'el came and looked at each individual two days. The day before the full moon and the day after full moon. And the night, the biggest tiger shock that ever came in to Braniki Beach came two nights in a row. It was something, the mystical part about the energy of this area. These are the, some of the students that come there. These are the four keys that we put up. It was carved by Kanani Kalakakui from a big island. On top of this platform, I can put hundred seventy-five bodies if we find them in the area. Nobody knows. The public doesn't know that there's vaults on top there. That's Lena Alas Halau. We have, the next time we put these keys back up, it will be done at midnight. Only in ancient time, when you read their kado, you do them at night. It's a different source of energy that you seeking to place back on the Aina in this particular area. Next. This is how we got it cleaned in two thousand fifteen. We was ready to start the restoration and bring this whole thing back. Next. This is our interpretive signs that I got right around the whole place. Should I go back one more time? The top of the head is where they want the water to flow in from the top development. Right there. To flood that whole thing inside there. You can see the, you see the keys on the bottom with two gray spots on the top. That's the vaults. That was done by one of my board of trustees. Before she passed, her name was Sharo Lovolo Bataki. She wanted that for the kapunas. So I gave her that before she passed. And next. My interpretive signs. It's written in Hawaiian and in English. Next. This is when the county was, and its administration changed. Now we had them all cleaned. You can see all the trees that are growing now in there. We put all of that in there. We got the Ni'au palms on the bottom. And on this side, we got them all set up, ready to go. I had a grant that I had, first grant I ever applied in my life. I got one eight hundred fifty thousand dollar grant with no strings attached. And we put this whole thing together. Next. This is how it looks now. This is what the mayor of Kauai did. So all the hard work that every one of us did was a joke to this administration on Kauai. Next. This is what the county is doing right now. Okay, next. This is what's happening. But there is no way they can dump the water, but into the He'ao, period. That's why the state made it a requirement that the landowner provide a drainage plan. It was specifically made for the landowner. All the landowners in this area. Next. This is what's happening. There is no resident or dwelling in this parcel. That's why they can do what they like to, but they don't mention the culture site. They mentioned the parcel. So it really gives us a an outside shot even to give them a chance to fight, to protect our resource and energy. And that picture right there, the development is way up on the left-hand side. That would come wrapping around. And on the bottom over there is where the Kanu'chins had to come up with a drainage plan for their four hundred twenty-five acres. And they could not provide that. The project is over there. Yeah. And this part right here. It's a detention basin right there. The way here is a ripple that goes down to the ocean. All of these over here, all of these right here. So when I did this, I knew the outcome is because if we don't protect our resource, it will be gone forever. Just a memory. Next. Okay, supposed to get two guys up there. Should I go again? Trustee Lindsay and trustee Cataluna. That one coming on the new version. I, I supposed to get one more after this. I don't know what happened.
I wanted to also add, Rupert, if, if you may, one year, the Maoris came to, wanted to visit this area, but they were asking for a specific area. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is it was Orca's school of Orca's outside, you know, and one of the Orca swam up into this, to the bay and beached itself right there. So they wanted to come visit this area because they were saying the Orca is, you know, that's who, that's who they are, and it's trying to get back to its homeland, the Piko. So when they're explaining Hawaii Ki Nui, Hawaii, they wanted to come and visit this area, so I took them down and introduced them to Uncle Rupert. But I also wanted to add more things. A lot of the charter schools go there. What they learn from this area is the one thing they teach you there is about being Hawaiian and what is Hawaiian? What is, what is your identity? And the one thing they tell you is, what does it measure when you're Hawaiian? Uncle Rupert, if you can elaborate on that, because the reason why I say this is because a lot of times when we represent something or we speaking up for something, sometimes you got to ask yourself, which one of you, which one of those people in you is representing that culture?
Okay. When I have the young students come down, I always ask them, how many of you are half Hawaiian? Out of forty kids, maybe only four. And the other ones feel kind of bad. So I tell them, but if you were all Kanakas, you would all be even. A Kanaka never measures the energy within himself to be more or less. Only the word Hawaiian makes you measure your identity. For me, growing up as a young person, living a popo kolea, I knew what it is to be a different color. So you have to learn how to kick ass. So you become street smart. Okay? So anyway, the kids, they went to Maui. They had a big Ula Halau gathering on that island. And the kumu asked the students, how many of you are Hawaiian? Everybody put up their hand, but one young man. So she told the boy, boy, what's the matter with you? You're not Hawaiian. And the boy said, no, I'm not Hawaiian. I'm Kanaka. You know that all the kumus had to apologize to that young man. But he gave the people there and the young people an identity. So for us, we always say we Kanaka. But you cannot be Kanaka if you don't know who you are. But if you say you are Hawaiian, that's mean many other person lives within you. But what character of that person that lives in you, that can identify you as a Kanaka? Try think about it. Sleep on it tonight. And go back. But the Maoris believe that the Orca and all that things there, it's in that bay on the bottom. The picture, oh, Dan wanted to see. If you can take them back to that picture? Yeah. You see that bay right there on the bottom? That's where the biggest tiger shock came in. And the kid was fishing and he seen the shadow in the water. And he kind of panicked because he was on the rocks. So he ran up to the road and he seen him come all the way in and he looked at him. So the next day, we was at the He'ao, because we were starting to build a wall when you see the Pu'el. So I told him, I cannot tell you why the shock came that night. Then the next night, he came back. And the same thing, the shock came again. But this time, the shock came out of the water and revealed his size. And the boy was in, he was shocked. And he just went catch one fish and he gave it to the shark. And the shark ate him right there in front of him. And he circled again. He came back and he looked at the boy and then he swam down. You know that the boy caught a hundred twenty pound ulua? As he disappeared in the deep. Those are the mystical things. I cannot tell you why. I can only tell the events that do place.
So Rupert, Rupert, I see that you have Native Hawaiian Legal Corp with you. Are they helping you with this issue?
I went out and tried to see what I can do. Tried to get ahead of what I'm trying to do. That's why I'm here in front of you. I need your folks' support all the way.
So how can we support you?
Yeah, I don't know. This is the, I know it's not the meeting to do that, but the reason why he's here is he wants us to maybe support him with any type of legal issue that he can, so he can move on.
So I'd like to call Kai Markell and see, hear from him. He's heard the issue in totality, so maybe.
In fact, Kai has been around this issue since day one.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha, Pihakako. Aloha. So I think it's important to understand that Kahu, Rupert Rowe, has immense kuliana with Kani Oluuma. has immense kuliana with um Kanaiolooma. Um, it's also important to understand that Oha has immense kuliana here as well. Um, really quickly to understand Oha's uh kuliana. We actually have been involved with Koloa, the He'au, the destruction of historic sites forty years ago, literally. Um, five years after Oha was formed, nineteen seventy-eight, we're still nascent. Um, Kawahiola, or Oha article, nineteen eighty-four, talking about Oha taking the lead in historic preservation in Hawaii to protect our sites. Just like honoring Kikahuna, what he did um back in fifty-nine. In that article, there's a picture and it's Kialhuna He'au in Koloa, which is the same landscape we're talking about. And Earl Neller, who became Oha's archaeologist and Malcolm Ne'echun, who rest his soul, was our cultural specialist. Fast forward to, I started in two thousand and four, one of my first assignments from trustee Cataluna was to look at Koloa and the National Park Service was interested in possibly making a national park here because of the immense cultural history and sites. That's how important it was. Uh, and of course Rupert talked about Pu'ohola in Kauai High, which is a national park. They were eyeing up this area as well. Um, at that time, uh, Konitzen Trust, what was before the LUC, and they had about a hundred twenty-four to a hundred twenty-seven acres. They wanted to change from agriculture to urban, right, to develop. But the cultural landscape was still there. Um, like Lahaina, the water there was immense. There's descriptions of ship ship captains in the late seventeen hundreds saying just a network of Aoi bringing water down, verdant agriculture as far as you can see. That's how important this place was. Um, How Hamid did archaeological study, he found an Aoi that actually ran under a house platform of a li'i, of a chief, which is indoor plumbing. You could lift up that pohaku and have fresh water in your hali. I mean, that's, I'm getting goosebumps. You know, our kupuna were awesome in the in the technology and their ike. So Oha found out about the um, LUC, the petition to change the hundred twenty-four acres. And we just, like, like, have we seen that? We got on a plane and we went over, we testified against it. And at that meeting is where I met Kahu Rupert. And we said, we're going to intervene. We want to intervene. Uh, and then I came back and I said, well, hey, boss, this is no more. We're going to intervene. I don't know. We're going to intervene. So they ended up um hiring Sherry Broder. And Sherry Broder looked at the case and she intervened petition in the LUC hearing on behalf of Oha. And we were all on the witness list. And the hearing started, um, Konitzen presented their side. And we had our witnesses ready to go. And then all of a sudden, it's like Kahu said, they they withdrew the petition. They're like, oh, okay, no, we're going to withdraw it. So they withdrew it. Um, a couple of years later, um, they tried to come in with a smaller subdivision. We opposed it, saying that the drainage is going to go down to the He'au. Um, at in two thousand five, two thousand six, Kahu was coming to Oha, talking to our Native Hawaiian Historic Preservation Council, showing them about Kanaiolooma, why it was important. Um, battling the county, trying to get the state to give parcel over, uh, trying to consolidate. Uh, we continued to um watch what's happening there, but every other place was under attack. So um, as Kahu said, in twenty-ten now, um, also going back to two thousand and seven, the county planning commission made, no, the county council, the county council made a resolution saying we object to changing this from act to urban. That was the county council Kauai objected to it. And and the Kauai Historic Preservation Council did the same thing in two thousand and seven. Because he said, this is too important of a sites and that the mana here is, I mean, so that was kind of unheard of, right? They're objected to the LUC petition change. Um, so fast forward now to twenty-ten, the two-hundredth anniversary of the unification of Hawaiian kingdom. And as Kahu said, Kapo'kahi, the Kahuna from Kauai, who went to um and told Kamavae's mother Kikua'apu'iva that he needs to build Pu'ohola, sacrifice, you know, person, which was end up Kewa'ahula. And all that prophecy connected Kauai with Pu'ohola. And Henry Kikahuna drew every stone, every akua, stone, pahakoki'i. And that's what they used to help clean and reconstruct. Well, one of these awesome akua's, they brought to Pu'ohola in twenty-ten and they gifted it and put it on top of the Pu'ohola. And that was symbolic because that's the unification of Kauai to Hawaii Island, right? Always traditionally at odds, right? And and the and the the two-hundred-tenth anniversary, I mean, two-hundredth anniversary was twenty-ten Kauai through diplomacy seeding Kauai over. And then a couple of years later, as they're restoring the He'au, Kanani'olokukui on Hawaii Island carves four giant ki'i and gifts them back to Kauai from Hawaii Island. That was the aloha aku aloha mai. So there is great forces at work here, trying to save this area and save this He'au for for bigger than we can even imagine. The other thing is right now, and I'm going to ask, I'm coming kind of after, just to come up real quick and say where we are in the procedural thing with the with the planning and the drainage plan. From the first time we entered this fight with the LUC, Oha was citing um Kapakai as a Supreme Court case in two thousand. We use that, every argument we use, that was the basis of our intervention with the LUC. Um, today we're using that, fighting the the master drainage plan. What Kapakai said, the Supreme Court now, said that before you give approval for land use, LUC, Planning Commission, BLNR, CUP, um drainage plan, there's a three steps you need to do. Number one, you got to identify what Hawaiian resources and cultural practices are in this area. You're supposed to do that ahead of time. Second is if we give this permission, a drainage plan, a change it to urban, resort, whatever, how are those, how is our our our, whatever the word, our not approval? How is that permitting going to adversely impact the resources and the practices that are constitutionally protected? And the third step is how you're going to mitigate it, right? So in some places, oh, guess what? We're going to lose that opai'ula and Kaline pond, but Army Corps is going to work with us. We're going to make a new pond. And should we start with the opai'ula? And that's kind of mitigating that loss, right? You have to do that three steps. Most agencies are not doing those three steps properly. Here's the catch. Kapakai two thousand, the genesis of Kapakai is in nineteen ninety-eight. In a memorandum opinion from the Supreme Court in Oha versus Haseko and Eva Marina. That is the genesis where that three, three-tier language that ended up in two thousand Kapakai, that's where it started. In our case, out at Oni'ula. And in that case, the BLNR gave a CUP, um, saying that there's no sites in this proposed Marina entrance. There's no burials here. There's nothing of importance here, right? And the Supreme Court, Oha appealed it up to Supreme Court. They went to the Circuit Court first because the BLNR said, yeah, good, here's your permit. Go bust through the beach, blow up the reef. And Circuit Court, we appealed. Circuit Court, unfortunately, was my uncle Wendell Hardy from Kauai, who said, mm, you're okay. Look, BLNR, you're okay. You did good. So we appealed it to the Supreme Court. In nineteen ninety-eight, Supreme Court came out and said, uh, Oha, all your arguments, some of these lands, you know, going to correct the aqua for all this stuff. Only one had merit and that was that they didn't identify the the cultural sites and resources there and the practices that are constitutionally protected. So BLNR go do it again. So BLNR did it again in nineteen ninety-nine, brought in some people. Do you know of any barrels out here? Do you know of any, have you seen anybody worshiping? You seen any upright stones, anybody praying? No, no, I don't see any of that. I see people surfing, fishing, getting limo. Okay, BLNR came out with the same finding they did ten years earlier. There's no burial sites here. There's no spiritual sites here in the area of the Marina entrance. Seven months after that, somebody digging finds Evie. Turns out to be one of the highest ranking chiefesses on Oahu. Uh, namahana kapu'kalei makali'i, a half-sister to Queen Kahumanu. Tu'leniho palawa, leopu', ivory coupe, five of them, big mana. Where was she found? Smack in the middle of that Marina entrance, where everybody said there's nothing there. That's the genesis of Kapakai. That's Oha's legacy. And this is the continuation of it. This is the continuation of that mana. So anyway, we're going to stop there. I just want to say my um my kupuna, Kalopili Na'ea is also known as Koloa Pilina'ea, born in eighteen forty. And their spouse, Ka'uhani Kukum from Koloa. That's my kupuna from Koloa. And Kalopili Na'ea's tutu is named Na'ea. And the A's tutu is named Ka'Mano. Ka'Mano, the shark, the ni'ugi. So, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Kai. We'll call on Kamakana.
Aloha.
Aloha, trustees. Mahalo to Kai for that history. Uh, now I get to the technical side of things. Um, we did prepare about a six-page memo analyzing the situation. Uh, there was a couple of key planning commission meetings that occurred last year. Uh, starting in July, the developer Meridian Pacific attempted to amend the condition for the master drainage plan. Uh, this condition was in place since two thousand and six and specifically included, uh, they needed to consider the impacts to to the He'au. Um, but in July, we learned that the Meridian Pacific didn't believe that they could complete the drainage plan as originally intended because there's so much development that had happened since two thousand and six. So they wanted, they wanted to amend it. Um, Save Koloa and Friends of Mahalulepu came in and to intervene and they were granted uh the intervention. And a contested case was supposed to they're supposed to get a contested case, which I think is supposed to start in late February. Um, the developer wasn't too happy with that. They tried to take the county to Circuit Court to get it amended because they thought the contested case would take too long, uh, but that was shot down. And based on the fact that the administrative process had not been completed yet, that being the contested case. And so um the developer took it upon themselves to try and, I guess, do a master drainage plan anyway and submit one to the county in December. And so there was another planning commission meeting to hear that drainage plan. Uh, the testimony during that meeting was quite interesting, especially from the county engineer who would claim that the drainage plan as originally envisioned in two thousand and six could not, could not be as envisioned because there was so much development that had occurred. And um but despite that and despite some of the reservations from the the commission members stating that, well, it's kind of like a wait-and-see thing and and mention, and I'd like to mention too that during this discussion, there's no discussion about Kapakai despite the fact that they had one completed into twenty-twenty-two with specific um, specific mitigations for follow-up monitoring. Uh, none of that was suggested during the approval process for the drainage plan in December. And so much to my surprise, even with the contested case going on, uh, the planning commission elected to approve the plan. Uh, so in light of all of that, all that history, I mean, there's other things at play too uh that contributed to our recommendation that Oha seeks legal counsel to assess ways that we can interject. We're not suggesting litigation at this point. We're suggesting that we hire legal counsel to provide recommendations because there may be several insertion points, not just intervention. Maybe with Circuit Court, there's also issues with the county potentially obstructing Oha's ability to review the project because they never sent us anything about it. Um, even when we initially approached them about this project in two thousand and twenty-two, they initially tried to charge us a fee to get all the permits and the things that we were requesting. Um, once we cited chapter ten dash three and mentioned that you're potentially obstructing our responsibility to carry that out, they waived the fee and gave us a bunch of the documents. So there's definitely a lot of issues here, um, not just with the drainage plan itself, but also responsibilities for the county. Uh, from what I understand during the discussions at the planning commission meetings, there's another development, Valley Valley subdivision that was cited as the primary problem for a lot of the drainage that's going down into the He'au, which was built before any requirements for detention basins. And so that, you know, both the engineers from the county and the engineers from the developer kind of pinned some of the blame on that subdivision. Uh, so that'd be another thing for, you know, legal counsel to look into that and what has the county done about it? Um, and then one final thing to note is that, so one thing that was stressed in the planning commission meetings is that uh, the drainage plans are supposed to maintain the current flows that are there. So whatever existing now would be, would be supposedly continued in theory. Um, but in order to do that, they'd have to construct detention basins elsewhere and the detention basins would hold the water and then let it out over a longer period of time to maintain that level of flow. So the He'au would experience the same flow at longer periods of time, basically. So uh, well, that's all I have on that.
Trustees, do you have any questions to ask any, uh, either Rupert or Kamakana or Kai? So I'm hearing from you, Kamakana, that your last recommendation was that they get legal help.
Yes, we believe all administrative remedies have been exhausted at this point and in order to fight this battle, likely needs some form of legal intervention.
So I'll ask Rupert again, are you getting legal help? Because I see um our Native Hawaiian Legal Corps is here.
Yeah.
You?
Yeah.
Okay. How can Oha help?
That's a hard question.
I'm going to call on trustee, he has something to say.
I I don't, I I just want to make you guys understand what what we were saying and and that is that we are we are going to get counsel, legal counsel to advise us on the next step on this. Um, that's what Oha is doing now. Um, that part, my understanding is the um get, within our budget and policies, we're allowed to do that. Um, to hire uh that kind of advisory counsel. Um, and we don't need to take a board action. That that's within the purview of the um of the uh compliance department. And that's what we're doing now. Um, based on what that 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 recommendation is, we we may want to intervene ourselves or you know, we'll we'll see, but that's in in the process now.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Trask. Turn on your mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have some comments on this colleagues because this really has gone on for quite a while. And I wanted to let you know that I monitor all things on Kauai because that is where the Trask family is from. And on the cliff top of Molawaa, you will find the cemetery of our family. All names there are Trask. So my great-great-grandparents are from here. The, one of the things I had wanted to point out, and maybe you can assist me, Oha staff, when I went back on this thing and looked at the master plan, which Rupert Ma put in, uh, it was in twenty-twelve. At that time, they're looking at and assessing the future next steps. And there's a section in there that I went and found and it's about the drainage problems. It's exactly about what we're talking about back in twenty-twelve. Uh, I found that they looked at the problem, the county knew. Uh, one of the things that had happened there was that there were ponds there, trustees. And when the county came in initially, they put the road right through the big pond. That was number one. The county did that. Uh, uh, the community master plan raised it. Uh, another problem that they had, and they identified, there's a drainage problem. A subdivision ma'aka of the ponds had been approved. So they knew that there was a drainage problem for the new subdivision of ma'aka for wealthy people. They did not address it for the subdivision. They decided to divert everything down to the Hawaiian cultural area. Uh, and when you take a look at it, uh, in the process of what the county did, we really lost one big pond already. And now, uh, years later, they, it's very clear that they never actually put in the drainage plan. They talked about it with Rupert in the community master plan years earlier. But when it came to addressing it now, last year, I just love that last slide that you had up there Rupert. It was not included in the package for the trustees. They're saying this last, only the big words, since there's no residences there, we're going to allow this cultural site to become a drainage area. The fact was that there were significant cultural resources and they knew it. But they used the excuse of no residents to go through the county code so that the subdivision on the Mauka side for very wealthy people would be able to drain everything down into this area. I really think that this is a very good case where we can see a long history of county working with community. And they actually say it in the twenty twelve master plan. The other thing I wanted to raise is, where is NHLC? You know, NHLC has received millions of dollars from us. And every time we have a community-based need, they come up with some excuse, like Waipio Valley. Oh, we can't go there. We have an excuse, we can't represent the Hawaiian taro farmers of Waipio. When I called them to say, what is your excuse? What's your conflict? They said, oh, we're advising one Hawaiian with the tourism group that wants to open it for tourism and ignore all the native beneficiaries been in Waipio all this time. So these folks have had NHLC online. I know that they're going to give more money, but I'd like, they're asking us for more money. But before we do that, I'd like to find out what NHLC is doing with the millions they have. And this is not the first time it's come up, trustees. I think that Rupert and his team need some support. Some of us were on Kauai and saw this area. It's clearly a cultural area and a gem. And when you look at what has happened with Rupert, you can see they're using it as a drainage site. And they knew that, and at the time they did it, it was already a registered cultural site on the state historic register. I think we need to take the county of Kauai on and assist our beneficiary, but I'm not sure how. And before we do it, I'm asking now our executive staff, I want to see what NHLC has done. Because colleagues, we've been picking up millions for them. And it seems that there's a bad habit they have whenever we ask them for their continued assistance under their existing contract. They all, they always have some kind of a conflict. Whoever is listening for their counsel, NHLC, you call trustee Trask after this. You come into a Zoom with this office allegedly as counsel, we pay your salary NHLC. And I want to have a follow-up with you after this, and I'm requesting legal memo from NHLC on all of the services you have provided and your assessment of the twenty twelve master plan that called for this. And what, if anything, you did last year when the county came out saying, oh, there's this cultural site, so we'll use it for a drainage area? I hope you sent in some briefs on that or something to the county. I should, would like to see it. Thank you.
Justia Huna?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Two years ago, I, I brought all the trustees to the site. We had that, that site meeting, and that was exactly what we're talking about. There was a development right above it, the Kaulanui development. And the results of it is, as you can tell now, it's pretty much overgrown. Yeah, so I just wanted to familiarize all of us, but.
I believe the trustees were there in two thousand and thirteen.
Yeah.
Bob, Lindsay, me.
Oh yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and we did see it, it was clean then.
Yeah.
You know?
So, so the reason why I'm saying this, I just want to just say, I think we should, I mean, we already know that we're going to support, but we should get behind the Hui. Thank you.
Kai?
Thank you Chair. So clearly, Oha does support Kahua Rupert. And we've been supporting for seventeen years in various capacities with advocacy, letter writing, physically being there. I think the question before the board and Oha today is, we have obviously a legal need for representation. It appears that Native Hawaiian Legal Corporation is doing an intake right now of Rupert's situation. However, Oha also has a lot of skin in this game and issue, decades worth. And I think by obtaining somebody off of our professional services list, like trustee Wahai mentioned, which is our staff recommendation, they can assess what is Oha's role, where are insertion points, you know, do we intervene? Do we file a suit? Do we do similar type of advocacy? Because our interests are aligned with Kahua, are preserving, but we're, we're also two separate clients. And nothing precludes our attorney doing an assessment with talking to NHLC and helping them with their assessment and back and forth. And, and lawyers can team up together and come in with both fists going. So I think that's where we're at right now. So I think there's maybe doing a presentation, I mean, an assessment. And we have to be careful because the money comes through Oha from the legislature and we give it to NHLC. It's very tricky when we start getting into whether they're going to take a client or not. Because that's, that's a legal professional standard of whether they believe it has merit, whether they have capacity, you know, there. And we don't certainly don't want them to feel forced to because Oha's saying, you got to represent this person. And from a legal, you know, that's just, it's not a good way to go because we hold the purse strings. So we need to kind of let them do their assessment, but we need to do ours as well. And nothing says they can't mesh together and make a very powerful duo right there. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you Kai. So I would propose that our staff look into this and make a recommendation to the board as to what kind of action that we should take. You know, we, we cannot take any action today because we're not agendized to do that. But I think that you should put your heads together, Rupert, our staff, Native Hawaiian Legal Corps, and, and see what the recommendation is to our board. Justi?
And good to see you, brother. Thank you so much for all you've done. And thank you for the information. Now that we have that, we'll, we'll await an action item, but that's going to be based on recommendations. So I would ask like the administration, when you do, let's just get the lead out and do this as quickly as possible. Been waiting a long time. I want to add, I'll certainly be in support.
Do want to add, Stacy, our CEO and staff has been doing a very good follow-up job. And I, I do want to give them credit for getting Rupert to the table. And I, I know and understand that they will be following up, especially now, we know we don't need an action item to get, yeah. So, but I, I, I feel good about them needing. Thank you.
Rupert, are you okay with this?
Yeah, just let me make one more comment. The road that he's going up, they cut him right through the hail. We got hurricane debris in the hail from Iniki. The county used it as backfill for the property owner. Okay. Then the parking lot floods, so the county pumps the water and throw them on top, the EV on the top. That's the drainage plan. The state said there's no drainage plan. So there's a conflict between the state and the county. So the state wanted me to move this into the council to stop the nonsense that is going on over there. And the archaeologist that was from the state got fired. And now the county hired her to do the archaeology work. I don't know what to say.
Okay, we'll, we'll leave it to the staff to figure it out and make recommendation to the board. I think that's a good thing. And we are in support of that. I'm very familiar with the hail.
Thank you Chair. Thank you trustees.
Thank you. Thank you Rupert.
Thank you.
Rupert is my classmate. Next on the agenda is community concerns. And we do have some people that have been watching our meeting today and would like to make them have some concerns. So I'd like to call on Christine Chow.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is it possible that you can take another comment? My name is Bridget Hammerquist. I'm from Kauai and I'm president of Friends of Mahau'ulepu. I listened to all the presentation this morning. I'm very appreciative. And the gentleman that reported on the history that happened last year with the July third intervention that was granted us on July eighteenth, I wanted to just share with the board of trustees that we are appealing the county's ruling on December twelfth. I would welcome Oha or NHLC to join in our action. It was absurd that in July, when they wanted to modify the master drainage plan requirement, condition twenty-six of their permit letter, that the county sent us to intervention because we showed the big drainage pipes that were already draining the surrounding parcels onto the twenty-eight acre Kane'i, Kawai'ono Koloa. And the effect and the impact on Kane'i Olahoma, as Wayne Wada of Isaki Engineering said, is known. It is a low point. They know it's going to send water there. And in fact, in the Isaki report to the county, they identified two TMKs on the South Shore to be the detention basins to hold the extra water that this covered twenty concrete, twenty-eight concrete covered acres are going to give the South Shore, the drainage is going to collect. The two TMKs they offered as the detention basins, one of those TMKs is the TMK for Kane'i Olahoma, the richest archeologic site on Kauai. So it is absurd that this is going down. My organization, Friends of Mahau'ulepu, that I happen to be the president of, and I have many, many good people that help me, we have expended over twenty-five thousand dollars on this effort so far. And we would welcome some support, some help, some joining forces. And I'm happy to acquaint you with our counsel. And my, my number, eight zero eight, three four six, nineteen seventy-three. I know Dan Ahuna has it. And I would love working with Kai Markell or the other gentleman that gave the history, but he's right on. July third, we got sent to an intervention because the commission then thought it was a really big issue. They wanted to modify. They came back, they went to the court, asked Judge Watanabe to modify, said it, said they could not do a master drainage plan. It couldn't be done. The developer said it could not be done and they asked the court to do the modified without telling the court. They had already made the same request of the planning commission and that it was in an administrative hearing process at that phase. So we had to move to intervene because we found out from a friend on Oahu that Pinkston had sued the county. We went and looked at what that was. And sure enough, he put the drainage plan in front of Judge Watanabe and asked her to modify the requirement for a master drainage plan. We moved the court to intervene. The court confronted the McCorsten Law Firm, David Minkin, and said, is this really true? Are you in front of the Planning Commission non-administrative agenda? He said, yes. So she said, well, the court on its own motion is going to dismiss this action because I do not have jurisdiction at this juncture. So they lost in the court and got thrown out, but we had to do that. We had to spend the money and hire the attorneys to get that done because that's how awful this developer is. You go back, next thing you know, on December fifth, and I hope you appreciate the timeline. On December fifth, they came into the county with, instead of a modified drainage plan, which they'd been asking for since a year ago, they came in with what they said was the master drainage plan, but in reality, it was a modified plan. When you read it, they didn't compute the cumulative impact from the developments already built. They didn't consider drainage to Kane'i Olahoma. In fact, they say in the plan that they stopped the Poipu Road. They considered drainage up to Poipu Road on the Mauka side, not the Makai side. And then when they called in Isaki Engineering and the planning commission had Wayne Wada of Isaki Engineering, the gentleman who did the study for Pinkston, the developer on Keahuna Plantation Drive. When they called him to testify, he, they asked him, a commissioner asks him in the hearing, and I sent that out with the minutes, the hours and the minutes that that testimony's at. The commissioner said to him, Mr. Wada, did you consider the impact of drainage to Kane'i Olahoma? His answer was, no, because we know where the water goes. But in his plan, the two TMKs he offered the county for water detention, one of them is just Mauka of Poipu Road in a low spot on Knutsen Land near the fire hydrant. And the other TMK was Kane'i Olahoma. And I think that is absolutely illegal. In the twenty twelve plan that your trustee was referring to, there is a statement in there that says county needs to recognize the need to preserve the historic site and not allow further degradation from water. And as I speak to you now, there are two culverts that the county put in under Poipu Road that are draining into Kane'i Olahoma every time it rains. So it is a, they are speaking with forked tongue and it is time to stop it. So we're in court, we're appealing what the commission did, the planning commission did December twelfth because it had already been assigned to an administrative hearing officer. He didn't know what to do with it because he had it assigned to him. Next thing he knows, the commission has approved this plan. And so he then sent out an order saying, well, it looks like what I was to do is now moot. So he dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could you please? Could you please give us your name again?
Yes, my name is Bridget Hammerquist. And I, I'm happy to serve as president of Friends of Mahau'ulepu, the entity that's been bringing the action to protect Kane'i Olahoma.
Thank you for all you're doing and for your testimony.
Thank you for all of you.
Thank you for having me. Christine Chow online, Christine Chow? Kiara Lorenzo Rodriguez?
Aloha, can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Um, okay, so my concern is, oh, sorry, let me introduce myself. Kiara Lorenzo Rodriguez, I'm from Mokou Keave from Hamaku'au'ua. Waipio Valley is my ababa, where my kupuna are from. My concern would be the spill that happened on Monaka. It was April twenty-first in twenty twenty-three. Bealanor held like an informational kind of update, I guess, if you would, but there was nothing else that came out of there. So I would just like to know, only because my Ohana has a little, you, you know, we, we holo-holo down there for Eia, for Pua, all of these things. And I just want to ensure the health of our vibe in my Ahupua. Mahalo.
Thank you, Kiara. Roslin Cummings? Roslin?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alono ko'inoa, raseneko manava'akea, malama marekamings, noho'au kalehe'au'ua'ua, koi moku'uni. So I'm here to kind of speak the oya'io, the ike oya'io, the truth. So about two years ago, we were blessed to have you guys present down in Koloa. And one of the things that I wanted to just kind of reiterate into this meeting is that the reason why Koloa is happening the way it's happening is because we're still playing with the same game. The Nusen Trust is one of the biggest reasons why Koloa is in the, the state it's in. And it's not just Koloa, it's the extending Ahupua that connect Weliweli, Pa'ua, Mahau'ulepu, you have Loa'i, all of that. So me and my children go down there on average three to four times a week. It's right down the road from us and we spend our time on the Kahakai. But the kupuna had worn, yeah, and there's multiple recordings of me saying that, that particular area, Ko'uno'ua'ua Koloa, that particular ina, Kauanui'au Koloa, it's like the blood vessel. So think about these cave systems that have water that runs down and, and now the microblasting. So now there's no water that connects to the adjacent properties and all this pico points that we're talking about. Now, I did a walkthrough, it's about three hour long, two walkthroughs myself, and then Liz of Safe Koloa, we did one. And then the second one, I came out, talked about the burrows, talked about the pico points. Um, in that particular ina, there was like a spiral circle Haile pico where all the souls that leave the outer islands come through and enter Koi through there. Now I think about the vi-vi and what Tutupeli taught me about how water travels and traverses, because we're arguing something that is bigger than just ourselves, yeah. So we gotta think on a vi-vi collective and be more, um, independent within our kulianna. So Do'ker at the time said, at the end of the three-hour walkthrough, the head of Do'ker, Brad Kipia'akana, who just so happens live on Nusen Trust land, who also does work with, uh, people like Kineho'akana, like the interconnections is real down here. Koi, everything happening in the darkness is happening so badly that it's so detrimental to the next seven, twenty-one generations. I don't even understand why our kupuna that's still speaking out cannot just speak the truth on why this is happening. If you, if you think about it, yeah. Everything that came up had happened because people had ulterior motives in what was going on. Dan Ahuna, for instance, had stated in one of the meetings that, oh, we went down there, but nobody was there. But we had an open connection, an open communication, because really the intention was to protect that vi and protect the, the kupuna, to protect ina, everything that was down there. Because the next generations, we being left with all the heva that's, that we're talking about. NHLC did nothing but sit on paperwork. The burial council did nothing but sit on paperwork. In fact, they met us down at Kanei Olauma in regards to multiple burials. Ku'kona, Monokolani Po, Kake'ewa, Paliku', they're all buried all over, right? And I know this is the same issue because I just came back from Maui. It's the same issue across the board on edi kupuna, same issue on water, same issues we having. But Do'ker made on comment, and he said, and just throw that people away because we don't have any jurisdiction over private land. And I mean chuckle a little bit because that was a beautiful Kanani move by our kupuna. All private lands, they don't have jurisdiction over, that means aloha vae that sits in the Great Mahela and is written and meets and bounds is private lands. And so we playing this game over and over, and it's time for us to come together and figure out how we will protect what's considered property, what's proper for the next generations to stand on. Because our kupuna EV is sa- is sitting in that ina that's feeding us and nourishing us, but it's not nourishing us because we not on that ina. It's nourishing the people that's, that's over there having vacations, making plans how they gonna make money off of our ina, that's what it's nourishing. But we need to turn that around, we need to find and figure out a way. I'm not gonna sit here and put all that kulianna on you guys because I spend my time doing UIPs. I just recently had on report and, and on statement, state land, uh, state parks, land division. My question to them was, what is your jurisdiction and what is your jurisdictional boundary? The state attorney general, everybody, I like know, what is your guys jurisdiction? What is your jurisdictional boundary? Because I wanna know how to navigate this system. So then the next generation's not left with the kind of ho'ou'kupu that comes in darkness. I like give them one ho'ou'kupu with light. I like be one llama, and I like, like that way, like our, our kupuna before, because I cannot keep going through this trauma. My six-year-old just told me last week, I wish you'd get arrested again because he was mad I wouldn't give him juice. So you think about the trauma that we continuing to live on and give to the next generations. Everybody in this office and everybody that listening, get one, get one kulianna, and everybody get the power to move forward, we cannot keep going in here in transition. So I mahalo you, all of you for your time. And I just made that statement because I just want you guys to know that two years ago, we could have stopped that water from being diverted, mahalo.
Thank you Chiara. I'm gonna ask one more time if Christine Chow is on the line. Otherwise, that concludes our community concerns. Uh, our next BOT meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February twenty-ninth at ten AM. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call.
Justia Huna.
Aye.
Justia Kaka. Justie Agina, thank you. Justia Lapa. Justie Galutaria.
Aye.
Justie Suzan.
Aye.
Justie Trask.
Aye.
Justie Wahee.
Yes.
And Chair Hulu Lindsay.
Aye.
You have nine yes votes, we are adjourned.
Thank you, thank you.